Well, good evening and welcome to Fort Mitchell City Council. I'm Mayor Jude Heeman. Today is June the second, twenty twenty five. To my right, I have our city administrator Edwin King.
Good evening.
To his right, our city clerk, Amy Gunther.
Good evening.
And we have our city attorney, Casimir Thornberry.
Good evening.
Welcome. Amy, would you do roll?
Mr. Arlinghouse?
Here.
Ms. Berger?
Here.
Mr. Dethridge?
Here.
Mr. Dietrich?
Here.
Ms. Notcaseel?
Here.
Mr. Polgiers?
Here.
Dr. Roding?
Here.
Counsel, we have a quorum. Do you receive the agenda tonight, counsel? Any changes to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Mr. Dethridge?
I'm sorry.
Second, Mr. Dietrich, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Counselor, you have two sets of meetings, minutes. We'll go for the May fifth first meeting of twenty twenty five. Is there any corrections of the May fifth meeting?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Mr. Polgiers?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Arlinghouse, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, motion carries. Second set of minutes, May nineteenth, twenty twenty five.
A motion to approve.
Mr. Dethridge?
Second.
Second, Ms. Berger, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. To the citizens and guests, is there anyone that wishes to address counsel tonight? Mr. Hens, I'll take you first. Just remember to state your name for the record.
Dave Hens. That's it?
That's hot, perfectly fine.
I'd like to make my semi-annual plea for the city to clean up the garbage at the bottom of Eastwood Road where it crosses a railroad track. We did it a year or two years ago, but now I notice that people in that mobile home park on the right, they're throwing trash over the railroad tracks down there. I don't know who's supposed to clean it up, but it is certainly an eyesore and does not speak well to the city of Fort Mitchell. So I'd ask that someone at least look at it, look at that little dip in the road as you come across the railroad track. Where people from the drinking establishment use that as their personal garbage can. Thank you.
I would have to agree with Mr. Hens. I've driven past that quite a few times. It looks like people up in the trailer park are just tossing their trash over the trees and down into the, into the train track area.
I was gonna say, is it actually on the tracks?
It's
It's in the gravel.
It's in the gravel area.
I've seen it too.
Technically, it is. I believe the railroad is supposed to do that. We will call, but not, you know, I don't know if they'll respond, but we will take care of it. Mayor, Ms. Burns was here today for another meeting, and she also said about the curb where, where once a year we have to trim the trees and catch all the trash there, so that is also on our list.
So is it possible that the property owner of the trailer park could be reached out to and let him know that these tenants are actually getting into the trash and creating an eyesore?
Yeah, my concern with that, Vicky, those making sure that we know that it's coming from there.
Correct.
We don't know that somebody's just tossing it off a truck. We don't know that.
It's far enough past where you cross that it's pretty obvious it's coming from the shrubs.
Way too far to be off the road. It's about thirty yards up the tracks.
Okay.
Coming down the hill. I've seen it too.
I have a couple of things.
Absolutely.
I noticed this school is out now. These kids are running their little motorized scooters up and down the streets. I don't know if there's a rule against that, but one of these days, these kids is gonna get clung. I see people backing out of their driveway on these narrow streets, and I'm thinking, are they allowed to be on the streets with these little motorized scooters?
We, Mr. Hens, we've actually had discussions over this for several years.
And?
And, you know, they, they, they are.
They're illegal.
We, we allow it. So it's, it's a, it's a fine line on the sidewalk, you know, which I like to have it. Not all the streets have sidewalks. And, and what to do with scooters or bikes or anything else, and it's, it's not just Fort Mitchell. I will say, across the country, everyone is discussing what to do with these because they weren't really identified.
The other thing I read in the paper a couple of years ago, Cincinnati had two kids killed on one of those motorcycles that either the car hit them or vice versa.
Yep.
I hate to see us make the headlines that way. I don't know what the answer is, but it's balls in your court, man. The park, which is recently renovated, is just beautiful, but it used to have a historical marker there at the head of the park, which talked about how the city was named.
You went to the right.
After, uh, General Osborne Mitchell.
Yeah, it's actually going, we're gonna be putting it back up.
It's what, please?
We're gonna be putting it back up. There's been issues.
It is, and you're, you have it someplace.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the garage there, in the pavilion. Yeah, it's, there's been an issue with those, but they
Okay, that's great. Let's talk about the, uh, the park again. I noticed there's still a lot of space in the park, and I'm wondering if you ever considered a bocce ball court?
We have talked about bocce ball. We've talked about that. The park board, they kind of run the park and where the expenses, so in this budget that the city council is going to read today and hear for the first time, in there are monies for to repair the pickleball courts, also adding additional playground equipment. But, huh?
Shade.
Shade areas. So I think they, they highlighted those areas as most critical for right now, but.
Would you consider a bocce ball court?
I don't, I don't mind bocce ball. I think that's a great idea, but.
It is for the people who can't play tennis or pickleball or volleyball anymore. It's not gonna take up a whole lot of space.
It's relatively cheap.
Very little maintenance.
Right.
Erlanger has one, and I talked to the people at Erlanger and said, how'd you get this thing? Well, it was a Boy Scout civic endeavor, and they put it in. Think about it.
It's a great idea.
I will commit to giving the city a bocce ball set, just to get you started.
Alright, I'll take you up on that.
You can take me up on that anytime you want.
Yeah, that'd be a great, equal project.
It's a great equal project.
Yeah. We have a meeting next week for the park board. I'll bring it up with them.
I'm sorry, I
We have a meeting next week with the park, park board, and I'll bring it up with them.
Ms. Roding is our representative for city council on the park board, so she'll take it to them.
Okay.
Yeah.
I come back next week, next month, and you have a result?
I, oh, I
Update?
Yes, I'll have an update next month, I promise.
Okay.
It's a great idea.
I want to take, Erlanger is a beautiful park out there, that flagship park. Boy, they got a lot of space. And you hardly know it's there, and it's very little maintenance. I talked to the maintenance guy, and he said, no, we don't do anything for this thing. Rather, uh, a budget-conscious cities.
It's a great idea.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You gotta come back more, Mr. Hens. You don't have to just come once, yeah, you don't have to come just once a month, or once a year, anytime you want.
Okay, I'll make it a point.
Alright. Mr. Holbrook?
Yes, sir, and, yeah, I haven't been around in a while, right, last September?
It's alright, we missed you too.
Been a nine months, but I've got great news for everybody. Enter the age of peace and prosper, well, first of all, Jebediah Holbrook at twenty-three West Maple Avenue, and I've got good news to report. Peace and prosperity between the car lot and the, I've come to a little deal with the I had to talk to Jeff Wyler and his lieutenants or whatever, and they're not parking on, on the street anymore, you know, the employees. And also the church, too. It looks a lot better. To the Baptist church and, you know, how that affected me personally is my nine-year-old, she went to preschool there. So when she was like three to six, I used to go and pick her up, and I used to sit at the back end of the lot and you know, there's different types of people. Some people would sit up right in front or try to get a closer one. And then all of a sudden, they start parking these cars there. But again, it just looks better and makes the city look cleaner. And really, I've come to peace with the, the, the car lot, and I think that they've been reasonable. You know, I've done, since last September, I've done a lot of research. You guys have got the, all the pictures, and you know, you can see I'm not just making it up. It's not my imagination. I'm, we're living it. And you know, the guy though, who was the manager there, I think he, I didn't like when he was in council, that what he was saying was when people were complaining about the cars, he was like, I don't know, I don't care, just let, let the police handle it. Which, you know, just refusing to take any responsibility. Hey, look, and look, you know, I understand the importance of supporting the, the local businesses, but you know, there's gotta be a balance. You know, and there's such traffic disruption and, you know, my goal is not down to shut down a business, but to ensure that businesses operate within the bounds of city ordinances and respect the residents and the neighbors. So, and apparently the, there, I think the good thing is, and the chief leader, I don't see him anymore, but I guess they are taking in people now, which is good, you know, and it seems to be working. The signs are okay. And again, we get to the root of the problem, it's just the, the over-parking, but I'm gonna back, kinda back off. They gave me what I want. I made a deal with them. I said, hey, I just don't want you to park in the street. A lot of people think I'm being too lenient on them, and Sasha enforced the whole four hundred and nine parking spots, but the, the higher-ups of the corporate have, you know, I appreciate that, and I appreciate Chief Nader. He's no pushover. He's nobody's parking lot attendant, and he's, you know, taking matters into his own hands. And really, when this whole thing started, he said, okay, now, hey, I don't want you making false police reports. So all of these pictures that you got there is a picture of each, fuck, you know, police call, which are dozens of, and I think it just became too hard to ignore. And I think that they were, and the thing about calling the police, like, the tenants, or not tenants, but the the residents would call, what would happen is, and you heard it here from the horse's mouth when Don Paparello was up there, but people would call up Sheila View, my neighbor Stephen, would call and say, hey, there's a car carrier blocking my driveway, and they would say, call the cops, and which, you know, I wish they would take a little bit more responsibility, but I think we've come to a, that's all I got, really. And then it really comes down to what division is that you want for the city of Fort Mitchell. You want it to look like Colrainy Avenue or Burlington Pike in Florence, you know, an industrial corridor. Or, you know, my, you know, there's a bedroom community. My vision of, you know, tree-lined streets and, you know, manicured lawns and a bedroom community. And, and again, there's, there's gonna be a balance between commercial and and, you know, residential. And I do, you know, this three-mile-square place that we call Fort Mitchell is primarily a residential neighborhood, and I try to keep it that way, but anyway, that's all I got. I think it's going pretty good. We've made some progress here and you know, I don't really have any other questions. I think the one other thing that came up through my research and investigation, and those pictures will show a lot of the block into the sidewalks. I didn't even notice about that. But then it came up, and you know, the kids gotta walk home from, you know, Beechwood and have to dodge the cars. And that's also when I was saying about their cars are spilling over into the street. That's quite literally a part. The other thing is that gate, I know they had some security issues. They had a car stolen or whatever. But there's some issues where, like, the wreckers, they pretty much got the neighborhood looking like a junkyard. When those wreckers come in, in that new house that they built, you know, just sold, and I know, oh, there was a dumpster there. That's why the parking was crazy. But as these pictures will, you know, it's a chronic problem. But really, my, my shout-out to he's in Estancia today, but Colonel N, you know, Nader, and this, the enforcement, and it's working. And I think it is just not an individual. It's a city-wide issue. Anyway, I thank you guys for addressing, or, you know, hearing me out, you know, but that's, that's where we're at right now, and I think it's, you know, a big deal. Any comments or whatever?
Counsel, you
I don't know if anyone feels a desire to speak, but I just wanted to give you a progress report. You know, that's where we're at right now.
Mr. Holbrook, I, I will say, and, you know, that there, there is an issue, and, and we've been writing citations and, you know, and trying to take care of that. Trying to work with, with them as a partner, you know, in a business of the city, but also we have constituents that live on the, you know, the streets, and we've gotta watch out for them too, and I do think we are making some progress. I do feel that there's a message to the drivers now, finally, not to do it. The problem is, is they're not, a lot of them don't repeat. There, there's a new driver each time, and they just do, and for whatever reason, they don't read the signs, they don't read, but I think our police, our policing has stepped up in that area. We're not perfect, and I don't know how, how to make it perfect in that area, but we are trying.
Thank you, and I, I agree, it's getting better. It's a, it takes, takes a village or a city, you know, and I thank you for your, and really, again, the guy over there, who's not here right now, but Chief Nader is the one, and he's no pushover. You know, he's not a parking lot attendant. And he's gonna, you know, I feel like when he said that, the car lot salesman felt it was disrespectful, you know, to the police force. You know, what if this guy's too busy in the back washing cars to attend to it? And you, Chief Nader, I think he's teaching them some respect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Jeff.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address counsel? Alright. Next on the agenda is a presentation by Red Tree Investment Group. Edwin, can you hear that?
Yeah, we're gonna have Joe, forgive me if I mispronounce his, Wallen.
Oh, that, that's a new one. Violen.
Violen, sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
Violen. And he's here with Red Tree Investment Group. Really, we've been discussing, especially since markets are changing now, where in the last few years, it's been the, the most opportunity, investment opportunity for the city has been to put it in some kind of money market or checking account to earn a higher interest rate. Now, that might be changing in the, in the foreseeable future, so we're looking at other investment opportunities with that. We're specifically looking for fiduciaries who will act as a fiduciary for the city. We've reached, we were contacted by Red Tree Investment Group. They have helped some other cities in the area, and we wanted Joe to come and speak or answer any questions you might have.
Do you mind, I wonder if I just follow up on, as chair in the finance committee and the investment committee, one of the reasons that we're doing this also is with the money sitting in the checking account, especially a number of years ago, it wasn't earning much, much interest at all. So trying to be fruitful with the taxpayers' monies. But the other thing is Amy would get a phone call from an advisor or a broker, hey, I have a bond available. By the time she makes calls and gets back to them, the bond is sold. The offering is no longer there. The other thing, it puts a lot of pressure on Amy to make sure that she's buying the bonds in the proper manner, at the proper time, at the proper rate. So there was a lot of fiduciary responsibility on Amy as clerk. She did a great job doing it, but that's why we formed the investment committee, but also having Red Tree here to take that position and, and that fiduciary, especially with, as, as he'll present. The, the costs are very reasonable, but to have that position as offloaded from especially Amy's spot, so. That's, I just wanted to make sure we, we covered that.
Thanks, Jerry.
Perfect. So, thank you again, Mayor and Counsel for having me here tonight. I did, at the outset of the meeting, pass up a one-page, very high-level overview of who we are, what we do, and a little bit about how we operate. So I just wanted to expand on that here today, and then feel free to stop me if there are any questions, just address them as we kind of go along. And I won't take up too much of your, of your time. So my name is Joe Vielen with Red Tree Investment Group, and we are an SEC-registered investment advisor. I've been with Red Tree for ten years now, but we as a business have been operating in one shape or form, you know, the, the finance world, for over twenty years. But this is all that we do. We only work with public funds. We do not do any private wealth management. We don't own any sort of money funds, so this is exactly what I do day in and day out, working with cities, counties, school districts, so on and so forth. So we manage about ten billion in public funds. We'll be shy about it. We mostly manage funds in Ohio. We do some fund management in Kentucky. We do work, I'll jerk your eyes to the bottom of the page, I condensed it down a little bit, but we do work with Meet NKY. We work with the city of Fort Wright and the city of Newport here in Kentucky. In all public funds, the, the goals are all the same, so there's three main objectives: safety of principal, liquidity, and then a market rate of return, and in that order. Our goal at the end of the day is to first and foremost protect these dollars. At the end of the day, these are taxpayer funds. Liquidity, that goal is there so that as you run an investment program, that you have the funds available to meet the operating needs of the city. So that's a risk assessment to not overextend yourself, and then a market rate of return. So after you've met one and two is, you know, how much funds can you earn on these taxpayer dollars? As a SEC-registered investment advisor, Councilmember Dee Forage did mention that we are a fiduciary. So in that capacity, when we make investment decisions, give advice, recommendations, so on and so forth, we essentially put ourselves in your chair, and given the information that we know about the city, this is what I would do if I was in your chair. That's essentially what the fiduciary capacity is. I think that's important to note because another term that was mentioned was a broker. Brokers follow different suitability standards, the services are a bit different as well. And then when it comes to what you're allowed to do with these funds, we follow a specific piece of state statute, that's KRS sixty-six four eighty, that basically outlines the dos and the dons for these dollars. So there's no going outside of that. As well, the city does have an investment policy. The investment policy more or less mirrors what KRS sixty-six four eighty allows. It expands in some areas, maturity limitations and other areas that you would find in an investment policy. Would wanna take, I do have that in my possession, but would wanna take a look at that further for any additional updates or suggestions as we get started. How, how it all works, so say we were hired on to serve as the investment advisor for the state of Fort Mitchell. Come in, day one, and wanna talk and look at cash flows, historic cash flows, where it balances today, where are you headed in the future? Because that ultimately will lead to investment decisions about what to do with the dollars that we would want to set forth to lock in interest rates. Right? Because we only wanna lock in a portion that is not needed for the near term, where you can earn that additional rate of interest. As well, it's not just the funds that we might manage in-house at Red Tree, but what other options or resources are available to you at the city who are getting a great rate at your local bank for your depository. But as was mentioned, the market environment is changing. Rates have dropped over the last year or so. Last year, we were talking five percent. This year, we're talking four percent. And all indications are still leading towards a further drop in short-term interest rates. So working with an advisor and investing in different maturity sectors or limitations allows you to lock in at higher interest rate now and enjoy that over a future period of time as rates withdraw, that rate would be locked in. And one, another important piece is, we're a full, full-service investment advisor, and so we would make the investment decisions on behalf of the city. And that doesn't come without communication, so we need to know where the cash flows are with the city in order to make the proper investment decision. So I'm not going back to Amy or Edwin to say, hey, we found this bond, can we purchase this? And then I get an email two days later, because, you know, they have their day jobs. They, they do what they do. And then we say yes, and then the bond is gone, which is a common occurrence with a non-discretionary type of investment account. And then the last thing that I would, two last things. We are the investment advisor. Someone would serve as a third-party custodian, that being a major financial institution. We typically partner with US Bank on that aspect, so the investment account would be opened with US Bank, and that would be the city's investment account. So all of the assets that would be purchased are in the name of the city. We are basically kind of tagged onto the account to be able to settle trades in the account, but we cannot move money in and out. Only an authorized designer here at the city can move funds. As well, an additional layer of security that we like to put in place is called standard wire instructions. So funds can only move from a designated depository that you all would designate from US Bank back to this depository, that being probably your local bank here at the city. And then the last thing is the investment management fees. We charge what's called an assets under management fee, and that fee is twelve basis points, or it's twelve hundred dollars per one million invested. So on a five-million-dollar account, that's about sixty, oh, sorry, sixty-two-hundred dollars a year. We divide that up by twelve, and it comes out of the account on a monthly basis. Once we get started and things get going, there's a lot of communication also about the investment accounting. I wanna make sure that you all are getting the information that you need and are doing the proper investment accounting. We could pull in the auditor to get their opinion on how you all should be booking this interest, so on and so forth. And then it's just about communication on an ongoing basis, so if things change here at the city, just to let us know so that we can adjust the portfolio if need.
So we'll be bringing probably some changes or some proposed changes. We've gotta work as an investment committee first, but we plan on bringing those to council at some point in the future. We just wanted to kind of give you a sort of an interview type of opportunity for Red Tree. It's, it's really a low-cost option for what we could out of it, and that's all we want to bring.
Mr. Dethridge, we, not to put you on the spot, we currently are investing in some different things that this, our, our committee's taking care of. And maybe I'm wrong, but something, it's like four percent or something, our, our return right now is what we're getting. Am I, am I thinking that right?
Well, right now, with, when it, because there's a number of different investments, but the Heritage Bank, the majority of the, of the assets are at Heritage Bank, and that's about four percent.
So this would be looking at all, all the investments, not just, you know, the ones at Heritage, but as they would mature, rolling this over and, and having that fiduciary responsibility. Are there any concerns with counsel or thoughts?
I guess if we can maximize money, I think that's something we need to look at, while minimizing some of the effort and liability of staff doing it.
Yeah, I think, and, and from Mayor's position there, one of the, if, if we're at Heritage Bank and we're at four percent, and the CD market is at four percent, there's no sense in us paying twelve basis points to get four percent. That, that, that's, that's an easy financial decision. However, as, as the interest rates start to fluctuate, and if they start to go down, again, it gets, gets back to, one of my biggest concerns is making sure that we're taking the liability off of one person making the decision on buying a bond or not buying a bond. Just because as, as Joe said, it was, you know, you have day jobs and you're doing something else. You're working and moving the city forward, and if you miss that phone call, that, that could go away, but that was one of the intriguing pieces from a, from my perspective.
Mr. Dietrich?
I guess, just a couple of questions. One, investing, do you guys invest primarily in what type of securities or the certain funds that you mentioned liquidity being a big concern?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it municipal bonds that you're buying?
Yeah, so this is all gonna be driven by that statute I mentioned. KRS sixty-six four eighty will outline the eligible investments for the city. And for most public funds, they're the same. Kentucky's a little different, but these are fixed income securities. This is US, US Treasury securities. This is U.S. Treasury securities. Some U.S. Agency securities, like Federal Home Loan Bank, Freddie Mac. You could do CDs. There's different, CDs are not all one and the same. There's different kinds of CDs. Municipal bonds are certainly an option as well. There are others, like one you've probably never heard of before, Charles Commercial Paper. It's a short-term investment. And they all carry varying levels, I'll call it relative risk, relative to U.S. Treasuries, which are backed by the full faith and credit of the U.S. government.
Okay. And do you have like, I don't know, any sort of perspective that has historical returns or?
That is a very open-ended question. So I will say this, for public funds, we generally don't manage performance, and that's because generally ninety-eight percent of the funds that we manage are managed to cost value. So when you're stuck to cost basis or cash accounting, we don't necessarily do the same maneuvers as a total return type of shop would be, meaning that they would take losses for projected future gains. So we're not always buying hold. There are certain situations where we would sell, but for the most part because it is a buy-in hold, that we would not necessarily have. We do have performance if you want it, but you don't want me just to cherry pick something, right? So you'd have to tell me exactly what you're looking for and what you would want.
Okay. And I guess in terms of, this might be more of a question for us. How do we determine like how much to, what, like if we decide to go with the Red Tree Investment Group, like how much of essentially our properties will be managed by Red Tree or?
Yeah. Yeah, again, with that K R S, there are restrictions, but we also look at operating expenses, general funds, everything else. We've been in a, in a good spot the last two years because Heritage Bank has been paying a good interest rate and it's, just sits in the checking account and it's liquid. So as Edwin said, I think if, you know, with the introduction here, that would be something that the investment committee would get back, and also with Amy and Edwin and their day-to-day experience and the budget, what that number would be. But it would, it's not a large portion, I know that.
As well, it's kind of part of like our services as well, so coming and talking to you about cash flows and talk about looking at historic cash flows, what have you done with these funds, or talking about if there's future projects, like how much should we siphon off for at least large dollar? And then we kind of distill down, okay, this makes sense to start out, and then we can adjust from there. And generally, that's where we're kind of conservative in that approach, is let's start low, you can always add more, and then as market cycles changes, you know, it may make sense to leave more funds at Heritage than in a full-line investment channel. So it's, that would be a part of that cash flow analysis process.
Okay. Some of the cash flow, even in this budget, right? We put a certain amount of money into the capital replacement fund and different things. So we're allocating this, and those are the funds that, since we are investing. Did I say that right?
Yeah, it is per the investment policy that comes before council, so you'll see that too, because we're probably going to make some changes. But ultimately, that kind of dictates how much we can, how much we need to keep liquid and liquid assets and so on. That's our guiding principle. Ultimately, as Joe said, what we can invest in is very conservative anyway. We can't, we can't really invest in equities. There are a couple of other funds that you might be able to get some equity exposure in, but ultimately, it's a very conservative that assets.
Sure. Okay.
Any other questions from council? Joe, thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to come speak with you all, and if you ever have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. If you, Councilman Dietrich, if you come up with something that you'd like to see, I can actually produce it for you and send you some of it.
Okay.
Awesome. All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the agenda. The road aid, I used to have to go with the thing, I just, I don't have to do that anymore. They changed the K R S, correct? So just, we'll offer, we'll ask for public input under the municipal raid, a road aid pursuant to K R S one seventy-four point one zero zero one. Is there anybody that wishes to have input?
We probably should say how much money is there.
Yes, you have that.
Yes, yes. We have a beginning fund balance of a little over four hundred and eighty-seven thousand with projected revenues next year of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. And then we have budgeted projected expenses of five hundred and seventy-four thousand with an ending fund balance of a hundred and two thousand.
All right. No other public input? Do I need a motion to close that or anything? So that's all completely changed? All right. Okay. We will close the portion of public input. Is there any council input? All right. Moving on to the city attorney's report. Before the city attorney's report, I, Council, you've received the Mayor's budget message, and I will just read what, I was going to do the two first, oh, yeah. All right, we'll do that first. How about that?
Yes, Mayor.
Go for it.
First up is ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero-two, amending chapter seventy-one of pivot through truck traffic on city streets.
Counsel, this is a second reading, correct? And so we would need a motion. Is there any questions? I know we talked about that. Edwin, any update on how do we get, it's more than just putting the sign up, correct?
Yeah, Nick would be in touch with all of the digital map providers. He puts that out, and they would show up. I know semi trucks have their own kind of software, different softwares that they use, and that would feed into that, so.
Entertaining a motion?
I'll make the motion for people. That's twenty-twenty-five dash two.
Ms. Berger?
Oh, second.
Second, Mr. Dietrich, is there any questions? Amy, would you do a roll?
Ms. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Dietrich?
Yes.
Mr. Arlenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Dietrich?
Yes.
Dr. Rooney?
Yes.
Ms. Snack Hazel?
Yes.
Mr. Polk ears?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion carries. I was excited about my budget message. Now I can, Counsel, you've received my budget message, but I will read like I have in the past. As we enter into this new fiscal year, I am pleased to present a budget, a proposed budget that reflects post-progress that we've made over the past decade and required to the economic time of the climate today. Over the last ten years, the city of Fort Mitchell has done an exceptional job of diversifying, growing revenue base while expanding services for our residents. I am proud to say that we have accomplished this while keeping our property tax in check. And this is obviously a testament to yourself and our staff. This year, we are facing an environment of economic uncertainty nationally, globally. In response, this budget is intentionally conservative. We have taken a cautious approach to projecting revenues, expenses, ensuring that the city remains solid on financial footing regardless on unforeseen developments or a broader economy. In this, the general revenues, you'll see no tax rate increase, but you will see the waste collection contract increases by three percent. And I also told you, that is just the beginning as we are negotiating our contract for that. A transfer of seventy-five thousand dollars from the park tax to continue paying from the loan today, the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar loan. Under expenses in this budget, four percent increase on employee wages, one firefighter and one police officer addition to continue minimum staffing, pistols for the police officers, bulletproof vests, repairs to engine seven oh three, turnout gear, EMS reporting software. Economic development incentive program is also included in this budget. A seven-hundred-thousand-dollar transfer to the capital replacement fund and an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar transfer to the road tax fund. You'll see in this, a municipal road aid has sidewalk and speed hump installations throughout the, throughout the city that we'll discuss later, but it is in the budget. The park tax fund is, will remain the same. The road tax, there is two million dollars budgeted and projected for the new Royal Drive, part of the gateway development. The capital fund, the city building, a public works gate opener to keep the gate closed back near residential properties, two police vehicles, police interview room improvements, and a small public works dump truck. In conclusion, I want to just say that it's always the goal to balance a fiscal responsible with high expectations of our residents for safety and quality of life in our community services. I look forward to working with you as council and another year of progress in services for those residents. So I'm excited to talk about our budgets. Cas, do you want to, we've got two readings, first amended and then adopting the new.
I have a first reading for ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero-three, amending the budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Amy?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that I did pass two exhibit As, one for the amended budget, one for next year's budget. They're just slight changes from what's in your packet. There was one payment for health insurance missing for the police department, and it's pretty significant. You know, it was a little under twenty thousand dollars, so I wanted to make sure that we included that. So I did change that on the police department expenses from what you had in your packet. And then there was also some actual revenue that came in in May that I could increase some of the revenue items to actual, it's not even estimated, so that that would offset the cost. And the increase in the cost of the health insurance in the amended budget did affect because it's a percentage increase for next year's budget, so it affected both budgets.
Counsel, that's the first reading of the amended budget. Is there any questions on the amended budget?
Just quick compliments to Amy and the entire staff, all the department heads, for all the good work and effort that they put in, it's very thoughtful, well done.
Cas, let's do the budget.
This is a first reading for ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero-four, adopting the budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
Amy, you're at, anything else?
Nothing new. That was, and then what was already proposed to you all, that you all seen before.
Any questions from council? New budget? This is both first readings, second reading, June twenty-third, is that right? June twenty-third? Yes, the second reading. All right. All right, moving on, you're good? Under the Mayor's report, I have two things. I've had some asks about signage in Fort Mitchell, on Fort Mitchell Avenue, and some signage in some other streets of where, how close we can park to a stop sign, you know, and going through that. You also had, we had another lady, is that?
About driveways? How close to driveways?
Driveways and stuff like that, and really looking at that. So it's not only driveways, but it's close to intersections and everything else. So I was going to get with our safety committee, also the fire department, police department, and then come back with some different recommendations and make sure council is on board with that. Because ultimately, if we make some of these changes, you'll get a call, so might as well get everybody on board, if that's okay.
Do we want to meet before the next meeting then?
Be nice to.
Okay.
That's all right. Good. The other thing on the Mayor's report is, we struggle each year, and Ms. Berger, you may be the only one that remembers this, but we struggle every year about passing out flags. And we've had boy scouts, and we've had scouts do it, we've had groups do it, and...
What's this flag during the Fourth of July parade?
Fourth of July parade, sorry. And we're continuing kind of having that issue. For probably twenty years, the city council passed out flags. They used to go first, and before the parade started, and they would take golf carts, and they got about a ten-minute, fifteen-minute head start. So if the parade goes out at twelve-thirty, or, you know, we would, the council would leave at twelve-fifteen and go out and pass out flags and see everybody. Over the last probably fifteen years, council has had floats and passed out candy and things. So it was kind of an ask if, you know, you would consider either doing both or doing something, candy or not. The flags, I will say, passing them out personally, and I think, Ms. Berger, you did too, if you don't get a head start on that parade and get out early, that parade catches you. And people want the flag to be able to show some patriotic support and things, so you've kind of got to get that flag out. We could get family members, or we could get somebody, but Joe, we've always, we've had issues the last several, several years of getting flags out. So it's kind of, I'm either asking council or their families, or if we still want to do that, can we go first? Or if we want to, if we want to still have the float, I'm okay with either one.
So would you have us do the flags and our families could maybe draw the candy or vice versa, whichever?
I don't know. It's just, I'm open for suggestions. We can still have the float. We've got golf carts set up too, if we wanted, because they're big, they're boxes of flags, and you kind of have to have that, if you're walking, and like this council has been walking for, you know, the last several years, you're walking and passing out these flags, you've got to come back to at least a couple of different golf carts or anything else to grab more bunches of flags and go back out, if you wanted to do that. If you wanted to do candy, there was times that some members of council couldn't walk or couldn't do that whole thing, or they'd rather sit in the golf cart and throw candy, and that's okay too. But it would either be going out, or we still have the float. I don't, it makes no difference. I just need, we need some direction because we've got to coordinate this. Is there any thoughts either way?
I think we do both. Maybe we do flags and candy, engage other people to help us.
Do you want to do candy when you're, when you're passing out flags? You want candy on the golf carts too, and you're passing out candy, or is it two different things?
I say two different, but that's my opinion.
We probably need ten people, at least a minimum, ten people passing out flags.
The difference between the flags and the candy is, you can throw the candy. The flags, you have to be out there walking along that sidewalk, and you have to be handing that in.
I was planning on walking anyway. I think some other people said they were too, so I'm fine with it.
Mayor, this might be a harebrained idea, but what if, I'm pretty good at those, but what if we started early? So parade goes off at noon. What if we started at eleven o'clock at Beechwood and walked backwards?
Walked back to join the parade?
Walked backwards on the route, then get on the, and get into the parade and come back this way.
You only have half the people out there too.
Well, you hand out, we're not going to hand out a flag to every individual that's out there, but we can hand them out to groups.
And when people put chairs out, you just go one with a chair?
Yeah.
I'm okay with anything.
I'm just wondering if there's other groups that maybe we haven't tapped into, like the National Hunter Society, the Young Marines or something, I don't know.
There is a, oh, there is a group of athletes that...
What happens, Joe, is they, either they don't show up and we're scrambling, or they show up with four people and then we're scrambling again. And that's, that's what we've been dealing with. And then whatever, the scouts were in, but then they wanted to do their own thing, and so I get that. But I do think it's something that we prob, I don't want to stop doing the flags. I think people, you know, they all put it, we just have to figure out how to put them out. We have no staff to do it because public works is all out, and it's either council or if we have another idea. I don't, I love that idea, and that's a lot.
What time is Dixie closed?
Typically at noon, and then it starts at twelve-thirty, but last year, the storm... But last year, the storms were coming, we elected to go fifteen minutes early, which I'm lucky, because if you remember, we got.
At a good pace.
At a good pace.
I think we're like, leading up to the week before, somebody, like residents could come pick up a flag, like five, you know what I mean? I don't know, something like that.
Yeah, I was thinking another option is you just have like a flag stand where we have the police cars at certain intersections. Do a bit of flags, see if people walk over and get them.
Because I also definitely, I don't want to hear, like, see people just like throwing them on the floor, the ground either.
Right.
You know? I mean, I just, like, I get that it's important, but is it that important for people to have a flag? Do you know what I'm saying, like, that day? Like, if it's really that important to them to wave a flag during the parade, they'll probably have their own flag too.
They're a pretty good, well, they used to be sponsored, but they're not sponsored anymore, correct?
Do we have the flags, you said?
Have you ordered them?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have them.
I mean, how many flags? To me, it's a lot. Do you know what the number is? Oh, yes.
That's no pass out for like both sides, the whole way?
That's the idea.
I think it's like six or eight, yeah, I think it's six to eight thousand flags is what I.
Oh, wow.
I'm wondering if, like, so talking about what Jerry was saying, maybe somehow early in the morning, like, if we sort of lined the route with them, I don't know, and then let people take them?
I don't think people would necessarily know to take them though.
Yeah, we'd have to communicate that. I don't know, I'm just trying to think of other ideas, you know?
Get golf cars and work backwards.
Yeah, we can.
Work backwards with golf carts.
That's what I was getting to, is what time is the road close? That gives you thirty minutes to get from Beechwood.
I think if we did it with golf carts, because we could hand out a bunch of flags in thirty minutes.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, I see now.
And then, work backwards to the parade route, and then we drive the golf carts on the parade, and that's when we throw our candy.
That makes sense.
And for those walking, it would be one walk that way, and then you get on the float coming this way.
When we used to do it, they used to always catch us about leathers. So, that fifteen minutes, the parade would catch us at leathers.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense, yeah. Because it's really fun throwing candy.
I know.
Yeah.
So, okay, but I think.
We could basically have people, if we do family members.
If you could ask your family members, let's see how many people we get. Ask family members, they could drive a golf cart, you know, you can be walking. You know, that would be ideal, is your family members driving, and then you're passing out candy or cart, so.
Is there a minimum age?
I was just going to ask that.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Fifteen now, probably, fifteen would be okay, right?
They have licenses?
You get your temps at fifteen now, so.
You can.
Yeah. Just one of the effects, what, two months ago?
What changed about how you recommend?
I missed that one.
Yeah, my fifteen-year-old has his times now.
Yes, it's low. It changed at the end of March.
Okay.
There's so many people that step out in front of vehicles.
Yeah, I used to know.
There has been, there has been. I didn't know.
A couple of little accidents with golf carts.
Whatever, be over twenty-one.
Yeah. So, like Devon, nineteen-twenty, it'll be fine.
Maybe a whole council should be on a scooter.
Scooter.
Passing out gator. All right, moving on, that's what I have under the Mayor's report, city administrator's report.
The only thing I have is the public works crew, they're on holiday this week, doing some repairs, some patchwork on Harvard.
Comments from council?
Just, I wanted to mention to Joe, I've had a couple of people request the kickball tournament comeback.
Oh, yeah.
The kickball tournament comeback, just throwing it out there.
Oh, no, get deep round. That was fun.
That was fun.
That was so much fun, yeah.
We'd have to rent, get, try to get the pavilion that, you know, we'd have it one night afterwards for the tournament. Yeah, that's a good idea. You guys are going, I'm getting a team.
Yeah, I think we are a team, but.
Okay, I like that too.
Game on.
Yes. Oh, my gosh, let's put a council team together, that'd be fun.
All right. Any other council?
Comments?
Comments, no?
No.
I don't think we have department heading report.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Polk ears?
Second.
Second, Mr. Dethridge, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Great job, everybody.